Who's counting?
Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the September first meeting of the Common Council of the City of Algoma. I'd like the clerk to take the roll, please.
Mary? Dashlett?
Here.
Boor?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Here.
Meverden?
Here.
Pabick?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. For those that feel comfortable, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Are there any changes to the agenda as published? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as published. So moved. Moved by John. Second by Scott. No, by Mitch. Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Before I go any further, I would just like to let everybody that's watching this on TV that because of unforeseen circumstances on my part, I'm unable to be at the council meeting tonight and run it in person, so I am running it via Zoom at home. So please bear with us as we work our way through this. We have three council members that are at home doing it on Zoom and the rest there are actually in the council chamber. So if you're hearing a delay and it seems a little slow, I apologize for that, but it's basically the only way that we can do and practice good, safe distancing. So again, bear with me. Approval of the meeting minutes of the August third meeting, a council meeting? Did anybody have any questions on those? Did you all have a chance to review them? I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Moved by Casey.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anybody here for public comment tonight, Jared?
There is not.
I take it there's no one there for public comment?
There's no one here.
Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
There is not? Okay. Okay, I just want to see if Jared could hear me. He tells me there's no there under public comment. So then we're going to move on to consideration of bills and claims and conference attendance. General bills and credit card payments? Do you all have a chance to review them? Any questions on any of the bills or credit card payments? None? I'll entertain a roll call vote, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by... Okay, who made the motion?
Mitch.
Mitch? And the second?
I'll second.
Okay. Jamie, please take a roll call vote.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Weez?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlett? Mary?
Yes.
All yes.
Thank you. There are two requests for conference attendance. If you look at your agenda, they're both for Randy Remicker, police chief. One is for the nuisance abatement at NWTC on September sixteenth of 2020. And the other one is for, again, Randy Remicker, police chief for grant writing at NWTC from December second to the third, 2020. Any questions on those, that request? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by?
Lee.
Lee?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports. I am going to ask that we do the committee reports simply because we didn't do them last month, but I'm going to ask you to do kind of a condensed version. And I'm going to start out with the finance and personnel meeting. And that was called to order on Wednesday, July twenty-second at eight-thirty a.m. Role was taken. The meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. The agenda was approved. The June sixteenth meeting minutes were approved. Consideration of bills and conference attendance were got over and they were approved. There was a... Nobody under public comment. And under new business, there was a motion made and seconded to recommend that Madeline Prokash be promoted to rec youth club supervisor. There was also a motion made and seconded to approve Robert E. Lee contract for construction engineering for the Sixth Street Stormwater Project. There was some talk about a potential face mask policy ordinance, and it was decided that the city should not dictate what businesses do. We prefer that they do implement a mask mandate, but it's up to each individual business. And we felt that the direction should come from either from the county or from the state of Wisconsin. There was discussion on the space need assessment that's going on. Carolyn Glimm of Performa, along with Jared Schmidt of Robert E. Lee, talked about the overview of step number three. That would be the next phase in the space need assessment that is currently taking place. Those would encompass the fire and rescue department, the youth club, police department, library, and city hall. There was a motion made and seconded to recommend the council approve a contract with Performa for facility master plan step three. There was also a discussion on the Explorer Algoma lease update, and that is for the lease that we have at Olson Park with the kayak company. There was also discussion of remote participation for public meeting minutes. The committees discussed the need to continue to use remote participation methods for councils and committee meetings. We said that we would continue to do it for council meetings. It was up to each chairman whether or not they wanted to do it at committee meetings. There was also discussion of reciting the pledge of allegiance at council meetings. One of the aldermen shared his belief of not reciting the pledge, and that was entirely up to him. We will continue to recite the pledge, and it'll be up to each individual if they would like to recite the pledge or not. After that, there was discussion of revising the meeting minutes for the finance and personnel committee. There had been some discussion about changing that. So after a lengthy discussion, we decided that we would change that to the third Tuesday in a month at four-thirty p.m. starting on August eighteenth. There was also some discussion brought up by one of the council persons on whether or not we wanted to start televising the finance and personnel meetings and also the committee meetings. I asked the chairman of the cable committee, other person, Mary, to take that back to his committee for discussion, and I think tonight he'll have something in his minutes at where they're at with that. There was a request for any agenda items for next meeting. There is also a motion to go into closed session pursuant to under state statutes nineteen point eight-five-one-e, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties and the investing of public funds. And that was basically to talk about the police contract and also to change the compensation for the park and rec director and also for the administrator. There was a motion made and seconded to go into closed session at ten oh-three. The... After we convened the open session at eleven a.m., that motion was made and seconded and carried. As a result of the closed session, there was a motion made and seconded to agree to the 2021-2023 bargaining contract with the Algoma Police Department. That motion carried. There was also a motion made and seconded to increase the administrator Hines' rate of pay to the bottom of the 2020 pay scale after his six-month review. And that... There was also a motion made and seconded to increase the park and recreation director's compensation up on her annual salary of five thousand dollars. Those motions were all carried. The next meeting date was August nineteenth, 2020. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, then we're going to move on to protection of persons and property. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. The PPP meeting was called to order, yes, last night, as a matter of fact, August thirty-first at four o'clock here at city hall. All members were present. Mr. Pabick was present via Zoom. The meeting agenda and the meeting minutes were both approved. There was... The meeting minutes of July twenty-seventh were approved. No one was here under public comment. Real quick, we did go through the department reports for rescue, fire, and police highlights for those three. Did include for the rescue, thirty-four calls a month, which brought us to two hundred and twenty-eight year-to-date. Tori Schmidt and Austin Lee are moved up to the AEMT pay level as they're running using their own licenses. Chris Benes has decided to not renew his EMT, but he will continue his services as a firefighter. Thank you to Chris for his services. Staff continues to be diligent, obviously, with their efforts with the COVID-19 and being as considerable to the community spread as possible in the area. And the county-wide senior officials workshop was canceled. For the fire department report, the annual inspection maintenances were both done on the generator and the fire extinguishers. The 2021 budget proposal was submitted. There was a request for continued service for the allowing the Algoma Fire and Rescue members currently fifty-five years and older to continue their service. And for the police department, the main things on that, there was some field testing that Chief Remicker is doing with the force on handheld radios, a couple of different, two different varieties that we're currently using. The big thing, Algoma PD was awarded the law enforcement DTR grant of fifty thousand dollars. That was due to Chief Remicker putting in for the grant that those... That'll be voted on tonight. The CVR and licensing program update, the training was conducted on Friday, August twenty-eighth. There is no update in regards to the SRO. And code enforcement, the nuisances, there's been a hundred and twenty-two letters issued with twenty-one citations, and there's only... Any action, there's only two of them. Moving on, we went through the approval of bills. There was a request to attend seminars that we went through tonight and approved for Chief Remicker. Old business, we talked about the radio testing. Under new business, we did talk about the request to use ATVs on city streets. Mr. Gary Poppy came in and did talk to the group. Action of that is essentially that we are going to be working with Chief Remicker and Matt Murphy in regards to posting signage and designated routes. All in all, the committee as a whole was in favor of moving forward and recommending something to the council. The working details to follow, we're going to be following up on that on our next meeting. There was a request for no outlet sign up at Summit Beach that the committee approved and the approval of the continued active status for the fire department and EMTs was approved for the age over fifty-five. License applications, there was just one for the Algoma Fire and Rescue for the September nineteenth, the downtown sidewalk sale and car show, which was approved. And a couple of agenda items for next month were the ATV and animal ordinance. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, September twenty-eighth at four o'clock here at city hall, and the meeting was adjourned. That's it, Mayor.
Are there any questions or comments of Scott's report? Thank you, Scott. Let's move on to Public Works. Lee?
Meeting was called to order at eight-thirty a.m. on August eighteenth. Roll call, all members were present. Also present was Matt Murphy, Jeff Huffman, Laurie Hanson, John Cross, John Pabick, Kevin Kleiner, Chief Remicker, Jared Haynes, city administrator, and Sarah Robertson. Approval of the agenda was... Motion was made and seconded, motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes of July twenty-first, motion was made, seconded, motion carried. Public comments, John Cross of Summit Beach Condos requested a no outlet sign put up having congestion northern end of their condos due to the tourists thinking it's a road and goes through, referred to Chief Remicker. There was also concern on the roadway going down the condos due to the blocktop edges deteriorating. Wondering if they could get replaced or repaired before winter so the piles don't remove more of the roadway. He was also interested in the city scheduling a meeting with the Maritime Point condos and Summit Beach condos for drainage problems. Presentation and approval of the bills, motion was made and seconded to approve all bills, motion carried. Reports, Jeff Huffman gave his SUEZ report, always normal and up to speed. Matt Murphy gave his report for the city. He gave... Equipment maintenance is ongoing day by day. Composite pile is gone, wait until mid-fall when leaves can be added when grinding for new composite. Working on storm sewer catch basin repairs and replacements, tree trimming throughout the city. The lift station, Sixth Street Lift Station, it was eighty percent items as possibility is starting next week. My understanding, September ninth, they're going to be coming in to start, so everything showed up already. So you'll see some movement down there next week, Wednesday. And both SUEZ and Public Works are still doing COVID-19 rules and regulations and keeping safety going. Low trailer and vehicle parking has been issued due to the amount of boaters on the marina, working on problems as we speak. Averaging fifty to a hundred boats launching weekly. Old business, none. New business, Kevin Kleiner expressed his concern on the project salt of town on his condo project. He would like reimbursement. He presented the committee with a packet explaining the added cost to him. And we tabled it till the following meeting because nobody got to see the full packet. John Pabick presented his concerns on several items concerning the marina parking lot along with city parking lots west of marina and Olson Parking, also overnight camping or overnight camping in the marina parking lot. The committee took it and advisement will be working on fixing the problem and have new ruling in effect for the 2021 season. There was a quick discussion on tree trimming, the tabled until next meeting on some other items for it. Next meeting will be September fifteenth at eight-thirty at city hall. Motion was made and seconded and meeting adjourned at nine-twenty-seven a.m.
Any questions or comments of Lee's report? Thank you, Lee. There is no planning commission, there was no community development, there was no tourism and promotion. So that's going to bring us to cable. Jake?
Cable Committee was called to order at four-sixteen p.m. All members were present. We also had additional staff present for the meeting. Meeting was in compliance with the open meeting law. We approved the agenda. Al Reinhardt moved to approve the February thirteenth minutes. That was the last time we had a meeting. Considerations of bills, claims, finances, and conference attendance. The Wisconsin Communities Meeting Conference was postponed from the original spring dates to October first and second, but that will also be held virtually. So Amber and Al and anybody else that's interested in attending that conference virtually, please let us know at city hall. We had a request from Crescent Beach, Friends of Crescent Beach, to do a special program for the upcoming thirty-fifth anniversary of Crescent Beach Boardwalk. That motion was approved with the caveat that Crescent Beach would pay for the filming costs. There was no old business, new business. Video service provider report was discussed, which is state form SL three-ten. Not to get into the inside baseball, but the state is now renumerating the city of Algoma for a percentage... Percentage of the franchise fee that was lost when the state reduced our franchise fee from three percent to two-point-five percent. Recording and airing of personal finance personnel and finance personnel committee meetings, which was the main reason that we called the meeting to order to begin with. There apparently aren't a great deal of fiscal restraints on the TV station to do that. However, the largest impediment is volunteers and/or staff to be able to add to our control room to do those meetings. We then... Well, I'll finish this up and then I'll put in an addenda to this. We also discussed the monthly stipends for the 2021 budget. Those were moved and passed and sent on to finance and personnel for consideration in the 2021 budget. There were some changes to the recording and editing stipends, and we raised those fees slightly for next year. Goals and special projects were considered, and other than that, the meeting was adjourned at five-fifteen. The addenda that I would add was that there was a management meeting of the cable committee to discuss personnel issues. A... The managers agreed to put together action steps to determine what's necessary for additional support in our TV program and broadcast booth, and we are working on that diligently. And as a result, I think at this point, we're going to have to defer filming the finance and personnel until we get personnel committee meeting, until we get our personnel in the cable production booth up and running and available to add an additional night. So we're in process. Everybody's in favor of it, but we've got to find either volunteers or folks that are interested in helping out in the TV station. And that was it, Mayor.
Any questions or comments of Jake's report? Thanks, Jake. Jake, you want to move on to library then?
Move on to library. Everybody was present. We opened and does an incredibly good job and efficient job of running it. We approved the agenda. It was... Met the open meeting laws. There were no public comments. We approved the minutes. We approved the budgets. The Friends of Library report were that the Algoma Book Corner reopened on Saturday, August first. The book corner will be open Saturdays from eleven a.m. to three p.m. All donations can be dropped off directly at the store during their Saturday open hours. Please don't leave books out on the front porch. It's going to rain. We're going to have pulp instead of books. So we would much appreciate it if you wait until Saturday to drop off your books. The directors report, staff continues to work on upcoming programs, and the programming will continue to consist online programming and grab-and-go kits. Diana and Braylon have signed up for their third course for their certification. And the library has received a Wisconsin CARES Relief Grant Fund from the Wisconsin Humanities Council, which will be used for a barrier at the circulation desk to be installed by packling glass, as well as safety barriers between computer stations to allow more patrons to use our computers at one time. The treasures reports, petty cash revenues, ins and outs of the finance were approved and bills were paid. Library planning, the board reviewed our library plan, which was put in place on July twenty-second, or I'm sorry, let me back up, on June twenty-second. It was decided that the library will now be open Monday through Friday with the current restrictions in place. We will review the next library board meeting. So we're almost back to open on a normal schedule. So feel free to drop by the library and check out your books. Air conditioning unit on the wall unit was installed. Yay, it's now cool. Thank you, Matt, and the Public Works Department. And the library received a donation from the trust, from the trust of an anonymous donor during our shutdown, and it was a significant amount of money. It's going to help the library expand our book selection, and we're looking forward to putting it to good use. We are now introducing what we call a hotspot, which will allow library passholders to check out a internet hotspot in case that they don't have Wi-Fi at home. And if you want more details, please contact the library. It's on a weekly basis, and it sounds like a pretty good deal. So you know, if you're interested in seeing what the internet is all about, if you don't have internet access, contact the library. We adjourned very quickly, about four-thirty-three. So in inner efficiency runs an absolutely great meeting. And now for history, can't go without that. On September second, thirty-one B.C., Augusta Caesar defeated Mark Antony at the Battle of Actium. So that was post-Julius Caesar. September second, nineteen forty-five, was VJ Day. That was victory over Japan, and that was the end of World War Two. September eleventh, of course, I think everybody, everybody looking and everybody that's reading a history book remembers September eleventh, and I hope you all reflect on September eleventh what that has done and changes in our country. September fourteenth, seventeen forty-one. The composer Handel, starting twenty-three days before September fourteenth, completed his seminal work, The Messiah. Think about that. He wrote that piece of music in twenty-three days. September sixteenth, sixteen-twenty, the Mayflower departed from England, close to the birth of our country. September twenty-sixth, seventeen seventy-four, Johnny Appleseed was born. That's kind of a fun note in history. September twenty-eighth, ten sixty-six, the conquest of England began by the Normans. And last but not least, the month ended on a very, very sad note in nineteen forty-one, September thirtieth, in a village outside of Kiev called Bobbyyar. That's where the Holocaust began. So reflect on those things this time of the year. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Jake. Always appreciate that little addition as far as history. Let's move on to medical board. John?
The Algoma Medical Center, our long-term care unit, met on August twenty-seventh. Meeting was called to order at four-thirty-one by Joan Gressel. We had a quorum there. We approved the agenda. We approved the meeting minutes from July. Financial report was given. Our occupancy rate based on forty-two beds was seventy-one percent. Average daily census was twenty-nine point eight-four. Total paid revenues was two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Total operating revenues was two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, two-ninety-seven. Total operating expenses was two-ninety-four zero-eight-seven. We had a net loss of twenty-thousand-seven-eighty. We had a capital supply of one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-one. This was related to the parking lot expenditure. All bills were approved. A roll call vote was five yes, zero no. Old business, dietary manager. We tried going with two dietary managers that lasted for about a month. The department now has one, and they have been working... The department now has one, and they have been working on reducing the number of hours in the dietary area to bring it closer to the industry norm. The folks in the department were able to find a way to save seventy hours a week in staff time, which will be significant. Two dietary staff members will be considered for diet, certified dietary management training. It will be an online course in the University of North Dakota. This is required training for state inspection. Nursing has been a chronic need on some shifts as well as CNAs. Job postings have been placed to fulfill these vacancies. On the parking lot, there was forty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and forty-one cents remaining from the loan for the parking lot repairs. This is due to overestimates for the aggregated stone needed for the parking lot. New business, fire alarm system. Our current system is obsolete, has obsolete parts and no room for expansion for additional alarms. This is a life safety code issue related to our next state review inspection. Multiple bids have been requested from known vendors in the business. Motion by DART to replace the current fire alarm system and authorize up to thirty-one thousand for procurement of a new system. Second by Wagner, roll call vote was five yes, zero no. Motion was carried. On the 2021 budget, Gene Marsh did an excellent job of detailing the information regarding our competitive environment, comparisons with light facilities within the state, expected reimbursement rates from all payers, projections based on three different census scenarios, and staffing impact. For the board to consider, this is the best, this is the best information available now for our decision-making. The 2021 budget will again be discussed at the next board meeting. She did an excellent job of staffing it through. Of note, Mayor Schmidt wanted the board and all citizens to know that neither he nor the city council is in favor of divesting or closing the Algoma Medical Center Long-Term Care Facility. He wanted to make sure that that got out at this meeting when these minutes were read. Understanding business, the Friends of the Long-Term Care Facility had no meeting. However, they will be, they will start up again with face-to-face visits in a controlled situation in September. Marge Rotaring will also act as the volunteer coordinator for the wheelchair rides in Septembers. She's got some pretty good human engines for those wheelchairs. The Administrator's Report, talking a little bit more about the census. We have twenty referrals we admitted to, two are currently pending. Marketing, resident newsletter is continuing to be sent out. That is highly informational to the families and really tells our story quite well. Networking with Green Bay Hospitals and Door County Medical Center regarding COVID-19 practices and Billen regarding physician coverage. Staffing was up and down this month with COVID-19 quarantine needed for staff at different times. Under the regulatory piece, new CMS requirements for staff training on infection control just came out. Along with that, we also had a report of the CARES Act relief funding providing seventy-thousand-nine-hundred dollars that is designated for training, training costs. A special note at the meeting, we extend our thanks to the country of Taiwan for their generous donation of five thousand medical face masks in support of our efforts during the COVID pandemic. We would also like to thank Representative Joel Kitchens for his intercession on our behalf in making this gift possible. Our next board meeting is at four thirty on Thursday, September twenty-fourth via Zoom. We adjourn at five forty-four PM. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, John. Let's move on to the Utility League.
The utility commission meeting on August nineteenth was called to order by President Felice at five thirty PM. All members were present, except one excuse, and that was Wayne Schmidt. There was a motion and seconded to adopt the agenda. Motion carried. There was a motion and seconded to approve the previous meeting minutes. Motion carried. No public comment. Old business, Planning Commission, there was no meeting on that. Public Service Commission is reviewing the application for a simplified rate case. New business, Auditor Dave Muko and with Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, presented the Algoma Utility Commission Annual Audit Report. Muko expressed the utility received a very clean opinion for their good financial records. He also mentioned that a lot of utilities do not complete their own Public Service Commission report, but Algoma does, and that is a reflection of good staff and management. Motion was made and seconded to approve the annual audit report. Motion carried. Bills, there was a motion and seconded to pay the bills and payroll. Motion carried. There was a motion and seconded for the monthly financial reports. Motion carried. Commission received individual copies of the job description, employee accomplishments. Slight discussion on that. Capital operating and maintenance budget will be presented in September. Motion was made and seconded to go on closed session at six PM. At six thirty-five PM, motion was made and seconded to open session from the closed session, and no action was taken. Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at six forty PM. Next meeting is Wednesday, September sixteenth at five thirty PM.
Are there any, are there any questions or comments on utility report? Hearing none, there is no Board of Appeals, no Board of Review, or no Redevelopment Authority meeting minutes. So then I would accept the motion to approve the receipt of the committee reports as presented. So move to you. Moved by Casey, seconded by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is no old business. Moving on to new business, need approval of a temporary Class B, Class B retailer license for the Algoma Fire and Rescue Association. That is going to be in, there will be a sidewalk sales car show type thing on September nineteenth, since they're not having the Wine Fest. The chamber is moving forward with a downtown, some downtown activities, and the fire department would like to be able to serve alcoholic refreshment. So did somebody make a motion? Jake made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Casey or Kevin? Both. Both. Casey, I'm giving to you, okay? Second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution ten thirty-four, authorizing certain members of the Algoma Fire and Rescue Department to continue as active members. To give you a little background on this, there is an ordinance on the books that says that anybody that attains the age fifty-five, with the exception of the chief, must retire from the fire department unless the council will take action on approving those members. There was a list of members that was presented at the PP Committee, and they're recommending to the council that those members that are over fifty-five be allowed to stay on the fire department as active members on the fire and rescue. So I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
By Scott, seconded by Kevin. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution ten thirty-five, accepting a Wisconsin Department of Justice Law Enforcement Drug Trafficking Response Grant. Is Randy there this evening?
Yes, I am.
Randy, do you have any comments on this at this time?
I know, just I, it was brought from the PPP, so it's a grant we put in to do some counter addiction within the city itself. So what the grant actually pays for is fifty thousand. You're looking at about two thousand dollars for training for the officers, and then roughly fourteen for equipment that go into a police vehicle. And the remainder of the money, which is roughly thirty-five, thirty-six, will be used to buy actual, some kind of police vehicle for the city itself. So it's not a patrol car. It's something additionally above and beyond that will be able to use as a tool within the city itself.
Okay, and that's a non, that's a non-matching grant, correct? That was an outright fifty thousand?
Correct. We, it's a reimbursement grant, so we have to spend the money first, and then we get reimbursed.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for your time and efforts in securing that for the city. I know it's much appreciated. I basically will then accept the motion on that resolution? Moved by Jackie. Second by, second by Jake? Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution ten thirty-six, authorizing Robert E. Lee Associates for construction oversight on the Crescent Beach Stormwater Outfall Project. Of course, Robert E. Lee Associate is our, is our engineering firm that the city has decided to go with. So all we're doing is authorizing them to oversee that project, which I understand will be starting after Labor Day, which is very good news. So I'll entertain a motion. Motion was made by Lee. And second?
I'll second it.
John? Second by John, thank you, John. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance, the first reading of Ordinance eight twenty-eight, and that's mending the chapter two, the Code of Ordinance is creating section two dash four eight, with some requirements for agenda items. This will be the first reading. It will be on the agenda for the October meeting for adoption. So if anybody has any questions on that, or anybody at home that's wondering what it is, you can contact City Hall, and they will give you all the information. That's it on your new business. I will now turn it over to the administrator for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. So first item on here, our operating budget, as we are currently in the middle of our budget season, our plan is to have a draft operating budget and CIP for the council to review. Right now, we're looking at that meeting being held the week of the twenty-first, so in about three weeks. So if you could please, whether it's tonight or in the near future, just let us know your availability that week. We can get a special meeting scheduled so we can have that workshop. Personnel manual, we do have a rough draft right now that we still need, that we're currently reviewing internally. And then after that, we will be bringing some of the proposed changes to the Finance and Personnel Committee this month at the regular meeting, and then hopefully have all the council review of it done by the end, or following the October Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. The reason being is figured we'd let you guys review it. We want you guys to review it first before we send it to legal for review to save time and make it more efficient. Just keeping in mind, we're talking about a pretty substantial overhaul, because this was effectively, I would say, a complete rebuild of the Personnel Manual. So it will be rather significant. In other words, there'll be a lot of policies to review and consider. But I just wanted to let you guys know that ahead of time, so to be prepared for that. Now the not-so-great news. So we did receive word from the Department of Administration that our grant application for the CDBG public facilities, matching the competitive grant, was disqualified for two reasons. The first was there was, in our document, which is about two hundred pages in total, there was a four-page document that we did not catch, was double-sided. So when we scanned it in, two of the four pages did not scan in, and we did not catch that. Not the biggest of errors, but an error nonetheless. The other issue we ran into was the policy that we provided regarding police use of force on non-violent civil rights protests is a requirement for this applicant, for this grant. And what we had at the time, or what, what we, you know, what we cited in our municipal code, which references state statute, was found to be insufficient. So in reaction to that, we looked for anything we might have in hopes of an appeal. We did find another document. I don't, I can't say with certainty yet if it's sufficient or not. We have contacted the agent at the state who oversaw our application, asking if that will be enough. If it is not, I will have something before the Finance Personnel Committee this month to approve, so we can get that resolved immediately, so that we can free up our CDBG close money, which is the quote-unquote guaranteed money from the, long story short, from the county. We are then looking to use that money in the meantime, until we reapply for this competitive grant in May. We are under the impression that our application was otherwise pretty, pretty good, scored pretty well. We could use a few improvements, which I've noted in the report, specifically getting a developer on the line for the project, we were told would have, would help our case next time. Nonetheless, our plan is to, if we either do not appeal, or we do appeal and do not prevail, this time, we will reapply in May for the competitive grant. So that's where we're at right now. I'll have more information once we hear back from our agent at the state. What's not in the report, we have a couple of new items as of late last week. Public Works Recruitment, as some of you or all of you may know, we have a resignation in the department that will take effect next week. An employee provided a two-week notice last week, so we have posted for that position. We are currently accepting applications through September thirtieth, and that's when we will be performing the first review of applications and then hoping to move very quickly on that so that we can get someone in here before winter. We are also looking to recruit in the interim, what's known as an LTE, or limited term employee, to kind of help act as a stopgap in the meantime, given our kind of short staffing situation in the Public Works Department. So we're hoping to kind of get that, that bridge employee in there. So that's, that's all I've got. If anyone's got any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any, any questions of Jared's report?
At the time that we applied for the CDBG funds, was the county going to review that before we sent it in? I, I thought in one of our RDA meetings, you said that they were going to help do that.
They, they did. They did offer it, and we, we felt that it was best to do it in-house to cut out one night, you know, to save some time, because the county, they didn't have the same level of familiarity with the project. And we did ask our consultant to review the application. And I just want to be very clear, we, the mistake was entirely on us here, particularly with that, that four-page document. So the plan itself, everything, from what we understand, was, was worthy enough of the grant, but it was a clerical error on our part.
So just to be clear, is there still a chance that they would accept, or is it done?
No, well, no, it's not done. So the worst-case scenario is-
Is that we have to wait for resubmission?
In May for the million-dollar competitive grant. There should be no problem whatsoever getting the six-hundred-and-eighty thousand for the close. We just need to tidy, we can still, because that one's not due until January, so we can submit for that at any time. So we just clean up those two things, that'll free up the six-hundred-and-eighty thousand in the close money, and then we will reapply for the one million dollars competitive in May. Because of the way we were looking to implement this project anyway, that's not really, I don't want to call it a minor setback when we're talking about this much money, but because the project was going to be phased anyway, we could start using, our plan is to start using that close money to start phase one, so to speak, because we wouldn't need the full one-point-seven million to do that anyway. So that, that's how we're, we're approaching this.
Jared, how do we plan to remedy the- the insufficient policy regarding police use of force on nonviolent civil rights protesters?
Yeah. So like I said, we, we found a policy that may be sufficient, and we're waiting to hear back from the agent at the state if it is. If it is not, I will provide a proposal or a policy for the finance, at the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting and then for the next council meeting to adopt so that we can be, well, so that we have all of our ducks in a row next time.
Jared, wouldn't that have to go through the PPP committee also?
It, we, we certainly could do that. I guess, I apologize. I was just looking at it in the interest of acting as expeditiously as possible. But we, we certainly could put it through PPP first. That, that would make the most sense, yes.
Chief?
Actually, it being a policy, it doesn't have to go through anything. It has to be signed and approved by me. So I can work with Jared to find out if the grant actually requests or wants verbiage, and I can basically, I can pen that up pretty quick and put that into approval once I just have it approved by our legal team to take a look and to make sure it's not violation of something else. But that doesn't have to go with the PPP. It doesn't have to go through City Council. That's an internal thing. I'll reach out to the city administrator to see what he can do to help him with that.
We referenced state statute, and that wasn't good enough?
When you look closely at the state statute, it, it doesn't provide specific outlines for the department and more or less refers to our needing to have a policy. And that's what was in our municipal code, cited a state statute, or I should say cites a state statute that directs us to have a policy. So that, yeah, unfortunately, and I spoke with our, our RDA chair about this after the fact. And we, I, I don't want to, I don't want to put too much of a spotlight on current events, but I think under previous years, I don't know how much weight would have been put on this particular item, but I think in light of current events, this is a particularly challenging item that we need to, it needs to be more robust than it would have needed to be in previous years. So with that being said, that's what we're, that's priority number one right now, is waiting to hear back from the state. If what we did give them after the fact is good enough, if it's not, we're cleaning that up right away.
And that's something that, Chief, you can write up, right? Is that pretty much what I heard?
Yeah, I need, I need to talk to Jared to find out what the language I'm looking at. I haven't seen the grant. I don't know what the requirement is, but let me talk to Jared. I'll find out what the requirement is, and I'll, I'll check it out from other departments that they have. I'll get something.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Jared's report or of the CDBG denial? Okay, thanks, Jared. Moving on to mayor's appointments, I do have an appointment for a representative from the school district to serve on the algoma library board, and that would be J.P. Robinson. I'd entertain a motion to approve that appointment. So moved. Moved by Casey? Second by Mitch. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And then to finish up under my report, I have a proclamation that I would like to read this evening concerning the World Migratory Bird Month here in algoma. Normally, this is done in May, but with COVID and everything, and I know they usually put some seminars on and stuff, they were unable to do that. And I did have Jamie forward everybody a little article that came out on the city of algoma from the bird migratory information that they sent out. And I hope everybody had a chance to read that. So please bear with me as I go and I read this proclamation. Whereas the city of algoma first received Bird City, Wisconsin, status in 2013, making it the first Kiwanee County community to earn that recognition based on its efforts to protect birds and their habitat. And whereas the city's location on the shores of Lake Michigan make it an important stopover area for diverse groups of migratory birds, including waterfowl, shorebirds, and landbirds. And whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that enhance our community and quality of life. And whereas these migrant, migrant bird species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insects, pests, and generating revenue related to bird watching, nature photography, and tourism. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas due to a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day celebrations have become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas while WMBD officially is held each year[1677.18]